Public participation. Anybody wishing to address the council can come forward to the podium, give your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes to address the council. But before we do that, we do have a proclamation. And I'll go ahead and come out front, and who is going to come up and represent? For how many? Okay, then everybody come on up. Have all of us come on up ready. In, coaches. All right, this is a proclamation in recognition of the 2021-2022 CHS wrestling team. Whereas the city of Cameron, Missouri wishes to recognize and pay tribute to a certain group of talented Cameron High School student athletes. And whereas, the city of Cameron is duly proud of student athletes for their hard work and dedication, and the boys' fourth place and the girls' sixth place team finish at the 2021-2022 Missouri State High School Wrestling Tournament. And whereas Dylan Pratt, state qualifier, Caleb Hush, second place, Riker Smith, third place, Tanner Riley, second place, Brecken Gates, fourth place, Chase Short, fifth place, Hall Vienna, state qualifier, Cole Henderson, state qualifier, Ashley Yamad, state qualifier, Justice Brewer, second place, and Holly Hedgepath, sixth place, all exemplified Cameron High School's student athletes at their finest. Whereas, the city of Cameron would like to recognize the coaches and mentors who helped this year's accomplishments, possibly including head coach Philip Lamb, J.K. Smith, Lanny Wake, Levi Marley, Mitch Colson, Ty Pratt, Jesse Pierce, and Colin Oxford. Now therefore, I, Dennis M. Clark, Mayor of the city of Cameron, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of March 21, 2022, as Cameron High School's state wrestling team in Cameron, Missouri, and further urge all citizens to consider and recognize the achievements the public schools and the dedicated student athletes are making and shaping the future of our young people. And witness whereof, I adhere to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Cameron, Missouri, this 21st day of March, 2022. Dennis M. Clark, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I will pass this proclamation to one of the coaches, Mr. Lamb, and we have some city pens for everybody. And again, congratulations. It's an incredibly demanding sport. Unless you participate in it, you really don't get it, but I did, so I get it. So, congratulations. Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed to our first public participation. Is there anybody wishing to address the council? Okay, seeing none, that will move us to the consent agenda. Are there any requests to move items from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Okay, the court will now agree the items on the consent agenda.
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the March 7, 2022 regular session.
Sheriff, entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have appointments, and this one is for the Tax Increment Financing Commission. They, I believe the commission has met, and they have recommended the reappointment of Quinna Lovejoy. So, I, Dennis M. Clark, do hereby appoint Quinna Lovejoy to the Tax Increment Financing Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Would you please, Mr. O'Donnell, thank you. And does the Code Board Appeals, that is just for review only at this moment?
It's just for review only. I do want to note that there are six applications. One of those have not called me back. I've left several messages. They initially submitted their application in January of 2021. At that time, they're not eligible. They are eligible now, but they have not returned my calls, so I cannot guarantee that they still won't remain eligible. I do have five other applications. One is recently presented by Sue Yaney, and she does not live in city limits, her residence is in Hadhop, or it is within your guys' purview to set those requirements, whether you want it to be within city limits or whether you want to allow outside city limits afterwards. One of the other applicants is our own Ms. Gina Reed, and she will be eligible to be done in the 12th quarter on the council.
So it sounds like we'll make a decision on this after elections, actually.
Well, the next meeting is before, and we can delay this until the second meeting in April, but that would probably be best.
Okay, well, it looks like then that would conclude that part of the discussion.
And I would like to know, do you want to consider outside city limits for the applications?
How does it count as a good?
If it's basically for the nuisance one, I wouldn't, I don't think it would be a good idea per se, just because you're ruling on stuff that you can't live under. Do you see what I'm saying? I don't think it's a good idea if we separate nuisance and building.
My opinion is if somebody owns property in the city of Cameron, they should have some input.
So they wouldn't have to have established residency, just you're saying that they would be required to have owned property within the city limits?
I think maybe taken each candidate, one at a time that comes up. We're just making a habit of, it can be outside city limits. Sue's done with this town.
Oh, I completely agree.
So.
Counsel, move.
I don't have a problem with it. I kind of agree they own property in town, but it can just be out of town, but
Yeah, I mean, I understand, Councilwoman S.'s point, and I think it's probably valid that they should have some interest in community ownership interest of some sort. I wouldn't have any problem. I'm just saying that they should be very qualified. And so, I think you have what you need, having a court.
If you guys are okay with allowing that, then I'll just make it in on my end.
I wouldn't like it to be more of a requirement to own property.
Okay, yeah. That's what I think.
I would say for a reason.
Deliver them.
Got what you mean? Okay, perfect. Okay, that will conclude that, and that moves us to the manager's report. The manager is out of state, and so active manager Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of quick things to report on. City staff has been meeting with MoCann to kind of address some of our grant writing efforts, and again, an effort to try to get out in front of different grant opportunities. We've been working with MoCann to see what services they can provide on those applications in that process. So staff have been meeting with them. I think we kind of have a regular meeting set up with MoCann to, again, just try to be in front of the grant agencies that might come up. And again, in current times, there are, I know there are several still out there related to ARPA or COVID and like that, so again, I think having them help us a little bit, that will put us in a little bit better position for future opportunities. The other big thing to note, we do have a grant request also, our commission meeting on Wednesday this week, and which we will be awarding bids to the three contractors. So again, that way we can kind of proceed towards preliminary bond closing and get into the actual financing from USDA project, and again, hopefully be something that we can put a shovel on the ground and turn some dirt sometime sometime this summer. So like I said, it's been a big step, it's been a long, long time coming to get to this point. I'm sure Council members can attest to.
A lot of tears.
A lot of tears for Martin and things like that, but no, I'd say it was a good step, and I said, so we'll do, I thought it was it.
So I have a question. Are you doing it?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a question. Have we gotten the money back from Jen yet that we?
No, we will get that back when we do the preliminary closing. And at that point, we'll basically provide the contractors with a notice of to proceed where they can begin construction. USDA will supply interim financing. And at that point, that is when we would be reimbursed for any money that we have spent prior to what project.
And so what time are we looking at?
Ninety days.
Couple ninety days.
Okay.
From today's date.
Carmen, I have a question for you.
Ben, since you've answered that question.
Where do our reserves sit? How much do we have in our reserves?
As of February, excuse me, February 28, the general fund was setting right at 30%. So that is within our range of qualified reserves.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions to the, and Johnson? Okay, seeing none, that will conclude the manager's report. Next item on the agenda is open business, and we have a discussion on Code Board Appeals. Who would like to start the call on that?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion directing city staff to prepare an ordinance revising Section 111 of the Property Maintenance Code to limit the authority of the Board of Appeals to only hear appeals from notices or orders relating to nuisances as defined by the city of Cameron Code Ordinance.
Second.
Okay, that is moved to seconded, so we have discussion. Would anybody like to leave us off?
It seems to me like this is the biggest sticky point of this in producing the board and putting people on it. Gina knows every nuisance thing that there is to do with Cameron, but she may not be the person to rule on 1.2% fall on the sidewalk versus whether it's okay or not, or whether, you know, there's one and a half percent gutter that needs to be torn out because it's not compliant with the actual code, but it still works.
But isn't that why we have Board of Adjustment?
That's correct. But any of those issues, I think, would go to, back to Board of Adjustment, not to the board of creative or where we're adopting. Is the only thing I think it's, that way they're just doing new stuff, not building.
Can I just get a clarification from members of the Board of Adjustments? Is that, would that go through Board of Adjustments, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Osborne? Are you shaking your head or?
I'm gonna look at the. But that's fabric, but that's gonna come, those type of things are gonna come before the construction.
What type of things are gonna come before the construction?
Like he was just saying, you know, is the slope correct on the curve, or is the gutter at the right slope or something to that nature? That's gonna be for the Board of Adjustments, but not after it's already built.
Okay.
Mike, you're a fabric.
You are, so the BZA, as it's currently constituted, hears appeals from zoning ordinance interpretations. So the building codes are outside of the zoning ordinance. They are within the actual Cameron Code of ordinances. But that is a, if the city council, the BZA, determine that that utilizing the BZA to hear those sorts of appeals from the IBC and like the actual construction codes, that is something that can be done. And that authority can be granted to the BZA. I will say, as just a high level matter, your IBC, your IRC, and your ICC, those construction codes, those are not unique to Cameron. They start with international for a reason. So builders have less issues and needs for variances from those codes because the building code in Cameron, and the building code in Chillicothe, in St. Joe, in Lathrop are all the same, with very minor local changes to them. So that's why you don't see a whole, or at all, any appeals from determinations under the IBC, or the IRC, or the ICC.
Thank you. So Patrick, does that mean that, putting the language of the Code Enforcement Board of Appeals is just for code enforcement nuisance violations? Would that then make, that would be redundant?
No, I don't believe so because of the way that the IPMC is currently established and set up. So the way that the IPMC is written, which is the International Property Maintenance Code, and the way that the city of Cameron hasn't opted it, the IPMC itself also goes into building trade situations as well as nuisance situations. So right now, as it's currently written, the Code Board of Appeals could hear appeals from all of the international codes in addition to the building codes that are part of the Property Maintenance Code. So the proposed revisions that the council is discussing now and would direct city staff to prepare would pare down the Code Board of Appeals to only hearing nuisance violation issues, and then those inherent building issues would fall outside of that and could either be appealed to the city staff themselves, or the city manager, or we could set it up so it would go to the BZA.
Other questions or comments? All right, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. On the motion that's on the floor, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, so we're gonna, that's, second meeting, this, April, we want to decide. I mean, April, we'll alter, put it back on to the appointment.
Okay, will we have to run this through twice before we do that?
Well, I guess we could have this prepared for the revision for the first meeting in April, and you would do the second meeting in old business.
And then just do the point of sentence, possibly?
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have a second and final reading on Bill 2022-8.
Bill 2022-8, ordinance of the city of Cameron, Missouri, vacating an alley in the west end of District of Cameron, Missouri, formerly known as Rhino Street.
Thank you. Sheriff, entertain a motion to pass Bill 2022-8 on a second and final reading by roll call.
So moved.
Second, moved in second. Discussion, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julia Osmond.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Gina Reed Pippa.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Bill 2022-8 passes by the favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, we have a second and final reading on Bill 2022-9.
Bill 2022-9, ordinance authorizing the city of Cameron accounting staff to write out a collectible utility account for the city of Cameron, Missouri.
Thank you. Sheriff, entertain a motion to pass Bill 2022-9 on second and final reading by roll call.
So moved.
Second, moved in second. Discussion, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Julia Osmond.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Gina Reed Pippa.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Bill 2022-9 passes by the favor, zero opposed. That will conclude old business and moves us into new business. And our first item is the first reading on Bill 2022-10.
Bill 2022-10, the ordinance authorizing the city of Cameron, Missouri, to enter into a lease purchase transaction for the purpose of providing funds to construct and equip improvements at the new community park and approving the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
Thank you. Sheriff, entertain a motion to pass Bill 2022-10 on the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion, Director, would you do yourself a place?
This, excuse me, this is the ordinance authorizing a sale for the transaction of 2022 certificates of participation to completely, or to build the new community park on the northeast side of town. Last meeting, staff sat there, the resolution that you approved to go to market, which was the first step, formal step in this endeavor. We have also had a rating call last week with Standard and Coors on this issue. So Standard and Coors is looking at our current financials. They will give us a rating by the end of the week, a preliminary rating. Then, at the next meeting, we would have the second reading of this ordinance, and then we would have funds available after it goes to market by the end of April. Roughly $6 million new debt, and construction is underway for the community park. Any other questions?
Questions or comments?
I will say I have 200 pages of documents here, and if you would like to read them, I did not copy them all for you, and I do have them here, and they are available on the site.
Thank you, Director, appreciate it. Lots of veterans wanting to do it on your part, and so thank you to all those. Okay, we've always had, if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Bill 2022-10 on the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. That concludes new business, and that moves us into our second public participation. If there's anybody wishing to address the council, please come forward to the podium, give your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes to address the council. Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to the next item. Let's see, so ladies, comments from the staff, let's start with the court.
I want to say a happy birthday to Gina Reed, because we're gonna have a birthday later this week. And I want to thank Council with the opportunity to send two of the annual first commerce last week. It was a lot of great things that happened.
Just, you've got a point, but I think it bears repeating again, it's special thanks to Cameron, to our line director, that you're right, there is a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, I'm glad, especially saying to the standards and board rating call, that's pretty grueling, and it does take a lot of time and effort, and it's just a power factor. All due work for Congress, I wish.
That's all right. Yes, Director. Director, Chief.
Mayor, Council, I was just gonna let you know, we put this out on our Facebook and sent some information out, that one of our officers, Shawna Conley, came up with an idea to team up with a child ID day at the YMCA. We teamed up with the Masonic Lodge here in Cameron, with Kirk Thompson, and several people in that group, and also with our department. We've also reached out to several agencies around us. It's gonna be on April 9, from 10 to 2 at the YMCA. Anybody that does, it's not just for the city of Cameron, anyone in the surrounding areas who come in, bring their child in, they'll take digital fingerprints, photography, even dental impressions if they want, and a lot of volunteers will be in that day to work on this. We do not keep any of that information. It's all given back to the parent, and then hopefully they'll never need it again, but if they ever did, they could have that package with you. Just wanted to let you know that.
Is there, is there an age, age women on the?
No, in fact, I think we want the age 21, even if young adults want to come in too. But yeah, there's no.
Babies?
I don't know how much we can do, but we could do the photography and the DNA, and the fingerprints and stuff, and stuff like that.
That's a nice thing to know. Thank you.
You betcha, thank you.
Yeah, that is a good idea. I did that with my kids. It was nice to happen, because I'm like, I hope I never have to use this. I got it, didn't, yeah.
All right, um, let's see. Chief O'Donnell? Yes, sir. Nothing? Right. Counsel? Nothing. Okay, well, that would conclude comments from the staff, and we'll start off with some ladies' comments from Council, Councilwoman.
We're attempting to speak into the mic recording, and I know we have our Facebook listeners, which I was told this morning, number about 5 to 15 per reading, but then after the meeting is over, for example, people may be not able to listen or read, but they will listen later, up to 1,000 people. So I am extremely pleased that people are participating, and local government, and the best they can.
I just want to say, congratulations to the wrestlers. I was very impressed, especially since there's such a big, long history of good wrestling coaches and young men in our history of our Cameron, so I'm just really proud of them all. And it's about it.
Go Dragons! Well, again, congratulations to wrestlers. Also, all of us have said this at one time or another, but it bears repeating. I'm really fortunate in Cameron to have the city staff that we have. They go above and beyond, and so just once again, thank you to all of the city staff that we put into it. Okay, that concludes my remarks, and so the next item on the agenda is executive session for preliminary. Okay, that concludes my remarks, and so the next item on the agenda is executive session for print and plain communication personnel. Chair, entertain a motion, go into executive session, roll call. Second, moved in second.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Gina Reed Pippin.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, five in favor, two opposed, and we thank you all for attending. We're ready, motion carried, and we're going into executive session.